Hit the recorder?
Testing. All right. All right. Thank you very much, Colleen. I'd like to start the meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I'd like to start the meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I'd like to start the meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The United States and America, the true republic which stands one nation under God, universal, liberty, justice for all.
Please remain standing for the movement in silence for brave men and women fighting for our own world, for democracy and freedom, for our first response, and for Passover, Texas, and Dayton, Ohio. Keep them in your prayers. Thank you very much.
So we still have the public hearing open for the zoning change. I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Motion.
In a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
Oppose?
All in favor.
On being said, oppose. Thank you, John.
On being said, oppose.
Thank you, John.
On being said, oppose.
Motion to approve the agenda. I would like to amend the agenda. On tonight's agenda, there's a resolution for that code change. I just received a document, email from the county, so I'd like to address that, so I'd like to table that resolution. Need a motion to table that resolution.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
So move. A motion to approve the agenda with the amendments.
So move.
With the amendments. In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
In a second?
Second.
Oppose, so move. Motion to approve minutes from the July 22, 2019 town board meeting.
I'll second.
In a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
All in favor?
Oppose.
On being said, so move.
Oppose.
Item five.
Item five.
Which is authorized payment of bills in the amount of $260,673.40. Need a motion to pay the bills, gentlemen.
Need a motion to pay the bills, gentlemen.
All in favor? I don't think anybody would be opposed.
All in favor?
Comments on the agenda? Any comments on the agenda?
Comments on the agenda?
Sorry, James.
Comments on the agenda?
Electronic stuff is not working today. Yes, James.
Electronic stuff is not working today.
Come on up.
Yes, James.
Come on up.
Yes, James.
Come on up.
Yes, James.
A very simple request that I have made before, and that is, when the agendas are made out, to limit the abbreviations so that people who are not familiar with some of these things will understand them. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Are you trying to say this is not IBM?
Are you trying to say this is not IBM?
Okay. Okay. No presentations.
No presentations.
So we'll move right to presentations.
Reports.
Go back here.
Reports.
All right. Reports. Departments.
Departments.
Okay. So supervisors' report, August 2019. Met with Next Amp representatives, Cessar, Cindy Hilger, and Town Legal Representatives to discuss pilot agreement. I met with Deputy Highway Superintendent John Alangi, Councilman Baker, and UC Sheriff's Department representatives to discuss the removal of the town landfill tires.
Do we have that in agenda or do you want to talk about it now, or?
I think we have it on there, right? Okay, so we'll discuss it later on. Attended the town board meetings, met with Councilman Corcoran, Budget Director Chris Welko, and David Lavoie to discuss health insurance for 2020. Met with legal Jerry Kamals to discuss issues with Tabor Place. Met with Brooklyn Bottling CEO Eric Miller to discuss Brooklyn Bottle Plant Project in Milton. Met with Deputy Highway Superintendent John Alangi to discuss preparations at Chlore Chance Park for blacktopping. I think you might have noticed that we did the preparation between the pavilion and the bocce ball court. And we had to stop because there was, we had the senior picnic on Thursday. Attended the town concerts in the park. They were pretty well attended. Organized a gateway meeting with UC Planning for the Milton Main Street project. Attended the South Pier Open House at the Milton Train Station along with the Marlboro Town Board members. Called a special meeting on August 5th. Attended a special meeting on August 5th for the purpose of voting for the bond resolution for the restoration of South Pier at the Milton-McNeely Park. Met with Deputy Highway Superintendent John Alangi and engineer for Milton Train Station, for the Milton Train Station Park, discussed improvements. Attended and worked at the annual senior picnic, picnic. Attended awards for improvement.
Attended awards for improvement.
Down at the Chlore Chance Park by Gerska's along with Dustin and Scoofus and Sammy Jacobson. Met with Robert Pollak and his consultants and Building Inspector Tom Corcoran to discuss Milton's Main Street project. That's my report. Thomas?
That's my report.
Thomas?
That's my report.
Thomas?
Building Department report, July 2019. Certificate of occupancy, three, request for information, 20. Building extensions, three, fire inspections, 10. Fire calls, two. Orders to remedy, 11. Complaints, 28. Burn permits issued, 14. Building permits, six additions, 14 burn permits, two carport garages, nine decks, one electrical, three pools, two roofs, three sheds, two signs, one single-family house, one solar panel installation, one tank, four tank removals. Total estimate, fees collected, certificate of occupancy, 450. Permit extensions, 590. Building permits, 4,220. Request for information is 2,000. Total building fee, 7,264.6. Fire inspections, 650. Burn permit, $65. For a total of income, $7,975.46. Total miles, 1561. Total gas usage, 112 gallons.
Any questions for Tom? Any questions for Tom?
Thank you, Tom.
Chief? Chief? Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening, chief.
Activity summary for the month of July 2019. Personal injury accidents, four. Fatal, zero. Property damage accidents, 18. Accidents that didn't require report, zero, for total 22 for the month. Vehicle traffic tickets issued, 211. Parking violations, two. Lotterie entries, 400. Total arrests, 16 for the month. Telephone calls handled, 1,689. It was eight hours of overtime for a full-time dispatcher, four hours for part-time dispatcher. Police mileage, 9,707 miles with a consumption of 1,297.995 gallons.
And you have all the attachments also.
Hello?
What you can't.
Do we have like a buckle up or something? Let's see the...
Say that one more time?
Do you have some kind of special, I mean, you almost doubled your...
Say that one more time?
That's what I'm saying. Buckle up, New York. Aggressive driver and DWI. We've been... Tickets are up, up, up. Well, they're way up there, see that, that's why. They're way up there, see that.
Any questions for Chief Kukulco? Thanks, chief. Thanks, chief. Okay. Highway Superintendent Kaila Appler?
You want me to tell you?
Yeah, please.
All right. Month report for July 2019. Roads on 710, we blocked top repairs we had made on Church Streets and Island Avenue. On 716, we installed 150-foot of 8-inch perforated pipe on Lily Lane. During the last two weeks of the month, we milled and blocked top repairs on Prospect Street, Millhouse Road, Old Post Road, Jonathan Place, Purdy Road, Willow Tree Road, Mulberry Lane. During the month, we had a crew out repainting all the catch basin markings on Old Town roads. Drainage on 701, we installed new drainage, excuse me, 60 feet of 4-inch perforated PVC pipe on Chestnut Lane. We continue to clean out catch basins and drain ditches throughout the town. Brushing weeds, we continue to mow and chip along the road sides throughout the town. We will flail mow along the guide rails at the Milton Firehouse and Olden Ian Road. Removed trees on Willow Tree Road and on West Street. On 731, we mowed the Milton Train Station Park. Landfill, we spent three days assisting with loading of tires onto trailers that were then removed from the landfill. Community gardens, on 73, we had a crew removing rocks, spreading topsoil, and then seeding the lawn area. Shared services, on 710, the entire highway department assisted Marlboro and Milton Fire Departments and the New York State Police, the town of Marlboro Police Department and emergency agencies with the fuel tank truck accident, 9W. On 729, we assisted the town alloy with the use of our street sweeper for their preparation of paving. Gas was 227.062 gallons. Diesel was 863.177 gallons. Respectfully submitted, John Alangi.
Thank you. I think Charlie's had a water break on...
No turnpike?
Water break. No, no.
I know.
Charlie Maje, Warderson, intended monthly report for July. Water consumption total, 16.703 million gallons, which is daily usage of 539,000. Compared to last month, 16.4 million gallons, compared daily usage of 546,000. Compared to a year ago, water consumption was 16.3 million gallons for the month, its daily usage of 525,000 gallons, pretty close to normal. Hydrants, finished weed whacking hydrants repaired and replaced snow markers. Service line, we had to repair service line on Western Avenue, 9W, and Dock Road. Curb boxes, we had to repair curb boxes on Anna Place, Highland Avenue, and Hudson Towers. Town park, we had to rebuild a sink in the bathroom, reservoir. We weed whacked and mowed, garbage had to be cleaned up. Storage tank inspected and mowed around the tanks. Service line inspectors, one, closing six, markouts 38, gallons of gas, 250, miles for the month, 1950.
Thank you, Ed. Colleen? Colleen?
Town clerk, monthly report for July 2019. Burn permits, one for $105. Conservation, eight for $1132. Dog licenses, 45 for a total of $245. Service fees, four for $3,320.66. Transfer station permits, six for $280. Punch cards, 29 for $1,515. Building apartment fees, one for $10,386.50. Fire fees, one for $1,415. Camp fees, 81 for $14,362.50. Zumba, one for $400. Accident report, 17 for $85. Certified copy, six for $200. Door warden fees, one for $205. Lawyer requests, five for $69.65. Park fees, three for $900. Train station fees, one for $300, for a grand total of $33,863.63.
Any questions for Colleen?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Water quality management, August 9, 2019. For the entire month of July, both the Marlboro and Milton wastewater treatment plants operated properly and complied with all speedies requirements. The following are the statistics for both plants. Average daily flow, 79,000 gallons per day, about 45% of design capacity. Average BOD removal, 99%. Average suspended saws removal, 99%. Permit requires at least 85 removal for both, 85%. That's on Marlboro and Milton wastewater treatment plant. Its average daily flow is 28,000 gallons per day, about 53% of design capacity. Average BOD removal is 99%. Average suspended saw removal is 97%. Permit requires at least an 85% removal for both. These are no significant events or changes that took place this month at either plant, but we are constantly making small improvements. We are currently still waiting on the two computer systems, they're coming, and are hoping to receive them sometime this month. If you have any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. There's some mistake or something happened with Dell and called Danny Brooks up the other day and it's being rectified. Town of Marlboro dog control. This is Andrew McKee. Monthly report, 71, 2019 through 731, 2019. We received a total of 27 calls this month, including 10 calls to service from Marlboro PD, State Police, or Ulster County Sheriff. Responded to eight active complaints and/or cases which are now closed or resolved. We currently have two open cases that has been addressed but is ongoing or unresolved. We impounded two stray dogs this month. We issued three appearance tickets. We currently have one dog in the kennel. We had zero dog bites reported this month. We have a dangerous dog complaint under investigation at this time. And that's from Andrew. Thank you, Andrew. I'll do all the small ones. That's Assistant's office. We prepared six property tax estimates. We worked on the school prorated and omitted tax leaves. We assessed 16 rail property transfers. We worked with the water department to review the parcels with the water district boundary. Mr. Michael Sommer, who was our data collector, has recently resigned and we will be advertising for the position once again. So we'll be doing that. Planning board review. Probably be next month. Probably be next... Howard?
Planning board review for July 2019. Meeting July 1st. Approval of stenographic minutes for 5:20 and 6:30. Were granted unanimously. Attendees at the meeting were Mr. Couchy, Mr. Clark, Ms. Landeta, Mr. Lefera, Mr. Truppani, and Mr. Trunkali, who was the acting chair. Agenda, Twin Pond, 155 Mahoney Road, Milton for a public hearing, site plan. Public hearing was opened and closed with the applicant agreeing to waive the 62-day timeframe. There was limited input from the public comments from New York State DOT and such. All of them are outstanding. The applicant will return when the aforementioned comments are received. Second item is Brooklyn Bottling, 9 River Drive, Milton, seeker site plan review. The applicant appeared for the sole purpose of seeker review. Comments from the jurisdictional fire department are outstanding due to ongoing discussions regarding existing water lines and their adequacy. A seeker finding statement and a draft negative declaration were approved. The applicant will return at a later date. Next item was Garone's Mountain Fresh Farms, 17 Bailey Gap Road Highlands sketch and site plan. Applicants' proposal began a year-round operation requires site plan approval. Details of the gravel parking area and landscape materials should be clarified. Sewer and water supply should also be indicated on all future plans. Project requires review by the Ulster County Planning Board and a public hearing scheduled for August 5th meeting. Topseed Landscape, 1943 Route 9W, Milton, site plan sketch. The applicant appeared for determination of significance required to fund the proposed product. Water flow and pressure analysis are required for jurisdictional fire department review. Clarification of the proposed use was discussed and requires determination from the applicant. Grading and drainage as well as set packs on the site also require additional clarification. New York State DOT approval, Ulster County Planning Board review is required. The applicant will return at a later date, next deadline, July 5th, next scheduled meeting, July 15th. Then, meeting minutes for July 15th. Attendees were Brande, Couchy, Clark, Landeta, Lefera, Ben, Truppani, Joel, Trunkali. First item was Buttermilk Spa Expansion, 220 North Road, Milton. Public hearing, site plan. The public hearing was held with limited participation from the public. Ulster County Planning Board comments were received and shared. Ulster County Health Department's view of sewer modifications and comments from our jurisdictional fire department are still outstanding. The applicant will return for approval at a later date. Brooklyn Bottling, the public hearing was held with the one neighbor voicing concerns regarding lighting. And Blair, for the proposed expansion, the applicant said he would address those concerns. Parking, signage, dumpster locations, any barrier on site were also discussed. The applicant sent you were provided representatives from the Marlboro Fire Department with recently received information regarding the water system and sprinkler system. The applicant and the fire department will discuss plans to come to a mutually agreed upon system. Ulster County Planning Review has not been received, but existing proposals, lighting should conform to their standards. Next item was Cosman Transalito, 263 Latin Town Roads sketch, lot line. Applicants proposed a transfer of .04 acres from one parcel to another to eliminate an existing approach, but no new construction plan. Project qualified with the condition that the plot shall be revised to show the allocation of any applicable wells and septic systems to confirm that they are not located in the .04 acre adjustment area. Next item is Bayside, mixed-use, 18 Burtzall Avenue and Marlboro sketch, SD and SP, I'm not sure what they mean, subdivision site plan against... The applicant reappeared as the subdivision of approval for the project has lapsed. The applicant submitted information pertaining to the status of the conditional final approval previously granted. No additional seeker findings are being required as the project has not changed since the August 14, 2017 approval. All outstanding and new applicant. Fees must be paid. Application will be sent to Ulster County Planning for review. A public hearing is tentatively scheduled for August 19. Notice to town board, pursuant to section 15549 of the town code, the planning board reviewed the proposed local law, resolution number 60, amending the zoning map to change the zoning district designation of 34 Dock Road from R District to C1, and had no objections. Next deadline is July 19. Next meeting is August 5. Respectfully submitted, Chris Moran is August 5. Chairman Beckley submitted, Chris Moran. Yep.
Okay. Of the committees? Recreation committees?
Sounds like we had a successful camp.
Excuse me?
Sounds like we had a successful camp.
Yes, it does sound like it. I don't know what the overall numbers are, but they seem pretty good. I don't know what the overall numbers are, but they seem pretty good.
How many people?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one, seventy-four.
Five weeks. So we haven't tallied up, you know, the people that actually, it was... The people that actually... Yeah. And all the bills usually come in later on, too. So the bills will start coming in now, so it should be good. Hopefully, we're very even, which will be great. And also, we're still waiting for the Senator Ark and 150 for the inclusive playground. When I called Dazley up and I had Senator Scoofus look into it, it was at the end, so it was a financial. So hopefully, it'll come within a month or so. I'd like to start that before winter. Emergency Management Prepariness Committee, Al? CAC, actually, I met with Philip, my son, to put everything together. Hopefully, we'll get that out of the way before the end of the year. The IT committee, I think we have a problem with our TVs. I told Mike, Mike's back from Europe, and I told him about the one TV, but I didn't know it was the spare with the computer, too. So we'll, I'll make sure that he gets the message back. I'll make sure that he gets... Yeah.
Do have something. I wasn't at the one meeting, I was on vacation. But we did have a large-scale incident in this town with that fuel truck rollover, Jerry was mentioned in the highway department report. But we had to call in multiple different agencies and both emergency services, all three, actually, with EMS. Jerry actually called in officers to traffic control because we had the highway shut down. And I know we got a situation with the cars, and I know cars cost money, but we were in a situation where Jerry had an officer at an intersection with his private vehicle because there wasn't any more vehicles. So here we have a town employee that's not really backed up by a marked official town car directing traffic on the road. So with that being said, with what we're seeing that's going on in the news and these large-scale incidents that could happen, and they are, could, they are happening, they're happening all over, the frequency that's kind of uncomfortable. But if we get a situation where we have a large-scale police incident, we've got the officers, but we don't have the vehicles. So I think this board really needs to sit and think hard about this. I mean, sometimes I think we look at these as cars, like we look at cars, that we bought a new car. These aren't cars, these are tools. When you get in a situation like we had with that fuel rollover, we needed all hands on deck. Jerry called in people. He had to tell me, we had to wait because we were trying to cover stuff. He was trying to get it covered, but his guys had to come in. And his guys come in and they don't have cars. So, I mean, we really got to look at this as a situation. If we're short on cars, that is not a matter of like, you know, it's inconvenience because we're not around our budget time, but if we have money in the general, I know it was brought up at the meeting, but I wasn't here. We would have had more discussion about it, so I'm sorry if I'm rehashing something. But if we have money in general and we're short on vehicles, there's no reason we can't take money out of generals if we're going to plan on budgeting for next year, which we weren't going to plan on any. So I just think it's, we're putting ourselves, the town itself, in a perilous position if we do get another large incident or if we lose another car, which some of them are have now, eighty to 100,000 on them, how many?
Three have 100.
Three have 100. Due to accidents, no, 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 but that happens, but now we're going into the mechanical side of things. You know, we're falling out of warranties. And, well, we're 100,000, we're out of the warranties. So we're not in a good situation as far as emergency preparedness in the town if we have a large-scale instance, which we could very well have and we just didn't. So, I mean, we really need to think as a town board, maybe we need to...
This is the first time I'm hearing that because I know we had a shortage. I don't know if it was before or after that incident that one of the cars were totaled. I don't know what the reasoning, was there cars that, I mean, there's no school, so there's three cars, right? I don't know...
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. One was out of service.
Okay.
Six that we had just wasn't enough.
You had six with the triangle, right?
Right. The TV accident the other day, we hardly have any TV accident the other day. Not that we had to do traffic and stuff like that, but we had people that needed to get around scenes and things like that. You know, this is one of the things we discussed, we're going to roll the dice to see what happens. It's possible that we can never tell when the incidents are going to happen and when we're going to be the car. Can we float to January? Maybe. Is that dice rolling to roll? Apparently, we are. Do I agree with it? Absolutely not. I had suggested in the liaison's committee meeting that possibly borrowing money from the general fund and then come on, I'm sorry, come in 2020.
Yeah.
Come October, we budget for two cars, and then 2020, when the budget loses its effect, take the first car right out of the budget, put it back in the general fund. I was told the response to that was, it can't happen, or it's not going to happen.
We didn't say that.
We didn't, we gave it out. Well, everything was discussed, we gave it out. Exactly what we said. I'm all about giving the answer on that.
Yeah.
I still think it's a great idea to do, it would allow us to start the process and do it again. As I, I think I remember mentioning to Eddie, just going on, it was Baker, Eddie. I haven't done any research, I'm not confident how quickly we get a ton of research in town set today, how quickly we get one. But I haven't done any of that stuff.
I think that was in the first discussion, right? When we found out that it was a shortage. We talked, you were willing to give up your car, which was admirable. And so, how many cars we have now? And I understand that the Dare car is unlimited. You know, we don't want to use that. We don't want to use that.
Into rotation, it will be used as a regular patrol car. It will be used to transport one of the S R Os to...
Okay. Okay.
And then, of course, by September, 201 will be in rotation as well. That'll give us the seven, that'll give us the...
Right.
All right?
Seven of them, the Dare cars.
Seven.
Seven plus the Dare car.
Plus the Dare car.
Eight.
Seven plus the Dare car.
From September. Five will be on patrol on the B lines. Five will be on patrol on the B lines.
Two.
Two here.
That's back.
One for me to use when I get here, if I need to go somewhere.
Well, actually, no, if you put the Dare car, there'd have three left.
Then we'll have three.
Well, actually, no, if you put the Dare car, the Dare car's going to be the school.
Can we, can we make it? Hopefully, can we, we need another car?
So the incident that Alan mentioned, the rollover incident, you had so many intersections, you had to cover, and you just, you had the people but no vehicles to.
You had the people but no vehicles to.
You still have, yeah, yeah.
And none of that.
You still have, yeah.
And now I got, which they did, plus we needed the manpower to close 9W, and our main piece to close 9W, and then, of course, some of the backwards.
Like he.
And that convinced him was Chestnut.
Not Chestnut. Old Indian Ridge. I went up the road.
Right, Old Indian Ridge.
I went up the road.
And.
Prospect.
And that was Chestnut, isn't it?
Well, Chestnut had to block.
Chestnut, Old Indian Ridge.
Yeah. Well, 9W had the highway department guys, I think, flagging people down.
We had everybody. We had everyone. I had all of them, probably to the highway driver, the fire.
They don't, there's no respect.
No, they don't, no, yeah.
Absolutely, no authority.
No, they don't. The two, I thought the two, I noticed the fire department, the police, the fire police, they do a really good job, I've seen. We do a good job, but you got to remember that we're putting them in personal vehicles. So to the driver who's driving just through, could be a traveling salesman, wherever, all they see is a red Dodge pickup truck on mark, with a blue light on top that means nothing to them. And I got a guy out there with an orange flag.
I don't think on the situation, if it gets any worse than that, and I'm not against the question, I don't think a one more car would have made a difference.
It's not, that's just, I'm not saying it was for, well, what I'm saying is the incidents that we're seeing happen throughout the country and the frequency that they're happening. We just had a very large gathering concert in this town all weekend long. My, I was, I didn't want to think about it, but what if? You know, we have a lot of large, we have our fall festival up here at the park. We've got things going on all over this town. We have a dome full of people up here almost every weekend. There's a lot of events, football games on Fridays are coming up. We have a lot of events in this town, and God forbid something were to happen.
Here's the thing, we went to the meeting and Howard put out a law exactly, and that was all it claimed, and nobody reacted to that, plus.
So we're still considering.
That's what we're discussing tonight.
We're still considering.
I probably know what the right number is. Does anybody know what the right number is?
I think they're asking for one more car right now. I think they're asking for one more car right now.
You can start that process and then one for next year. Because I'm not sure if it's going to take, well, I can tell you, in order to get it, even if I were to get it here tomorrow, to get it equipped, it's going to take you four weeks. By the time I order the lights and the cage and stuff like that, it's three weeks, and then a week for them to do the install. So even if I had a car here today to drive over to the municipal people, that's four weeks. It's probably going to take me four weeks to get a car. So we're only two months already, and that's if we ordered it today. Now we're waiting to January. I may not see cars for waiting to January. These cars may not make it tomorrow.
Well, I told you before, the one that you're going next year should be ordered in, you're not going to have to pay for your order.
We need it, we should order it now.
That's not what I'm saying, I'm saying the second year.
Second car, then, yeah, you order and pay for it. You just tell them we're going to pay for it in January.
So I understand you and I agree for the public safety that we should do something. Unfortunately, I think, I don't know if we could, Councilman Corcoran isn't here and I think he was pretty adamant that we should look at this a different way. I don't know. So I think out of concern, if we want to make a motion or whatever the board signs, I think we have to get his, you know, his thoughts on it also. And him not being here, I don't feel comfortable doing that, but we should do something.
But in the meantime, I think you should do the diligence.
Oh, absolutely. So, oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely. So let's make a motion to that effect that we would like to see the.
Just a bill, if we get it.
Yeah, first of all, let's see, make a motion that Chief Kokosa goes out and looks for a car, see what the availability is, see what the prices or whatever, okay?
When you get to that point, and the fleet manager, when you get to that northeast area, and if you have a problem, I'll give you his number, and you can call him directly. He's in charge of all the fleet U.P.S.
Al, you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. You know, he goes ahead and gets the information.
Okay. So start the process. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Okay.
Along with that was the idea of approaching the town, the school district about helping us in the future. So you're going to.
We set that meeting up.
Okay.
We're on it. And actually, the MOU is, we have to do a new one because it's outdated, it runs out in twenty nineteen. Yeah, worked out, so. Yeah, worked out, so. Yeah, we, I set that meeting up right away. I set that meeting up right away. So nothing happening with the Milton Train Station Foundation, Milton Landing Citizens Committee? Milton Landing Citizens? Yeah, sorry.
I have something to do with the train station.
Yeah, sorry.
Last week, two different times, we were summoned to the alarm at the train station, one on Friday and one on Sunday. Both times patrol went, they found doors open.
Really?
So I called Mr. Schroeder, who says the train station wasn't used. So my question becomes, how did the doors get opened? They weren't Friday, Jimmy, obviously.
Somebody had a key.
So we had a key.
Somebody leaving them locked.
So they activated the alarm system, but they never relocked the doors.
Right.
So I asked him, who did he do with that? He had no clue. So I guess the question becomes, do we have alarm system codes open out there and we have keys open out there that are not telling people or aware of that are out there?
I could tell you, there are some keys out there to some key people on the foundation that they're installing train set and they might have forgot. So I'll get the hold of the president and put out an email to make sure that everybody locks it up. Put out an email to make sure that everybody locks it up. Yeah, there's not many keys out, you know, there's not many keys out at all. You know, there's not many keys out at all.
The gal wanted to say so.
So.
The gal wanted to say. That was on the landing. He went back to train station. That was right at the landing. Yeah, the fourteenth of September, we're going to have our cornball tournament, department department, and there's the fundraiser for the landing.
Yeah, pretty good.
So it looks like it's going to be a good time. So, you know, tell a friend, basically.
And be on Facebook and all that.
It's on there already.
Oh, okay. Sounds really good.
I can send a link to Danielle.
And have her put on the website.
They put it on the Facebook.
Yeah, the page. Facebook, too, Facebook page. Should be a good.
Danielle takes care of the website, too.
Okay.
And along with that, I think you're all aware, we did apply for that lower park area grant again this year for the third time, and that went in on July twenty-sixth, was the deadline. And that, hopefully, we'll get something.
Yeah, a lot of good work put into that. Thank you very much, Howard, Rosemary and Jerry Wine, John Deham.
And John Behere.
Marlboro Hamlet Economic Development Committee, we don't meet anymore, I know.
Well, the only thing that's going on.
Talking about the trails, right?
The trails, yeah. And we really haven't, there's no news on them. Meet Me in Marlboro, I know BJ wanted to be here and he thought he, I think he told me he was going to be here by eight o'clock and we're running ahead of schedule, so I just texted him and told him, get here if you can, but. So maybe we'll see him and maybe we won't. I don't know any other things about Meet Me in Marlboro. I don't know any other things about Meet Me in Marlboro.
Yes. And that collaboration with the bank for the Downey Festival, that's going forward.
I told Stina or, I told Sheila that we were all behind that, so she was okay with that, so we'll see.
And there's, usually we get four hundred dollars. And there's, usually we get four hundred dollars. Anything else with Meet Me in Marlboro?
Not that I'm aware of, I'm sure there is, but.
I'm not aware.
I'm sure there is, but.
Yeah, she got the folder out.
Yeah, they have a brand new folder, it's great. Yeah, they have a brand new folder, it's great.
Farming, the Hudson Valley Guide, mapping directory. So Meet Me in Marlboro, it's very good. And we have it at the town clerk's office, right, Colleen? We have it at the town clerk's office. We have to set the town, yeah. We have a whole bunch of them in the rack, yeah.
So hopefully BJ will be here and, so hopefully BJ will be here and, if he gets here before we close.
Hamlet of Milton Association Committee?
I haven't heard anything from them.
The flowers look great.
Flowers look awesome.
Yeah, the flowers look great.
But that's pretty much it. I think Vivian's been away on vacation. Doesn't seem too much. I think Vivian's been away on vacation.
Says why Jim's not around either? The Transfer Station Review Committee?
The, well, we talked about, you know, about the tires, we had done one trailer removed. I don't know how many tires. And we're thinking about doing a second one, possibly in September if I can arrange it with the Ulster County Sheriff's Department, the trailer company. We were a little concerned that they might not like the, all the mud that was in the tires, or we haven't heard anything bad yet, so I guess they accept it. And I think that either this month or the next, we'll arrange for that chipping of the.
Well, I just signed the agreement with the Oprah on the grinder the other day, so I think John said that, maybe this week or early next week, and first of all, I think Gary Lazaroff has to be trained on it for a certain amount of time, and then they'll be using it.
Oh, Gary's going to get trained on it, okay, cool. I mean, they had a very good, okay, cool, very good meetings with the Oprah guy, so they seem to be, birds of the same feather, let's put it that way.
Yep.
Birds of the same feather.
So that's about it on the transfer station.
Just so everybody understands on that, maybe we talked about this before, they're going to come down and they're going to chip, not just a little pile by the transfer station building, but in the back, the big stuff. Spend a couple of days because they really liked what they saw, because they use it for their purposes, so we're going to, they chip it and we just have to pay for it to be hauled back up to their Kingston facility. That's the deal key word, yeah.
Yep. And I think Deputy Superintendent Alangi is taking care of all the details on that.
Yep.
Yep, he is.
Yep.
Yep, we already talked about Tomback, that building, the plans, design standards, Route nine ever cores are overlaid district, we already talked about that. LWRP, that should be just about done. I think the sixty days awaiting, we should get confirmation that we're finished with the LWRP. This is one water district improvement now. Metal building, I don't think, I think the last thing that we have to do is the garage door. I don't know if anybody looked at the pricing, so I'll follow up on that. So, new business advertised for BOAR position, and soon the Hilbert accessory appointment, we'll do that, we'll talk about it, and we'll probably send out the, something in the paper for that position and transfer station brush permit, we just, we should talk about that. So I think there's a little confusion of what's on the, on it, so we're just trying to. On it, so we're just trying to. Could you bring that microphone a little closer to you, Colleen, please?
What to narrow down, what exactly visit means when we tell the customer that comes to the window, visit, or dumping their brush. So Larry wants the person that pays the fifteen dollars as extra for your brush permit, it to mean just one visit per week, which, I don't know, I mean, it doesn't matter to me or Danielle, we just want to be clear on what to tell the person that's purchasing the brush permit. You know, it could either mean one each operating day, that, which is Friday, Saturday or Sunday, somebody could bring brush Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Sunday for the fifteen dollars, or it could just mean if somebody comes on Friday and brings brush, they can't come the rest of the week. So we want the board to determine what a visit would be.
What was Larry's recommendation?
Larry only wants it to be once a week because of the money situation up there. And I, we don't really care, we just want to know how to explain it to the customers when they purchase it, you know.
The money situation?
This means if you buy a brush permit, you can only go one day for operating hours a day, you know.
I mean, it's only a small, it's like a thirty gallon bag, right?
Two thirty gallon, they allow, per visit, so.
So Larry's concern is we're going to, if we, we're too permissive, we're going to, it's going to build up over time.
Larry doesn't.
It's going to cost us more to chop it up.
Larry, he wants people to only be able to come.
He probably just doesn't want people to take advantage of it, because you could, if you're a commercial guy, take advantage of it.
I don't think.
Well, how would we know that? Say somebody was doing.
Well, you're only allowed two thirty, two thirty gallon bags. Two garbage bags a day, when you relax.
Two thirty gallon totes. So I assume when you go up there, he probably puts the brush into these totes that he already has there.
I don't think he does, he just looks at what you.
Or he just eyeballs it and says, okay, that equals two. And then that's, he wants to say, okay, which he'll have to have him and Jeff, you know, say, okay, John Smith came here on Friday, now he can't come here on Saturday or Sunday.
I don't have a communication.
I don't know how they're going to do that, but that's what he wants to be done. Like I said, that's fine with me and Danielle, it's just, we told him, the board needs to decide that, not us, so.
If he's fine with it and you're fine with it.
Yeah.
I'm fine. That's fine.
Yeah.
Because I told you in one night, as long as you're, you two are good with it.
Yeah. We just, like I said, we just need to convey this to the person that's purchasing it so they know you're paying this money, it's only, it's not per day, it's, I mean, it's just once, one time for the operating hours for that week.
So the board's okay with it?
Sure.
It's once?
Once a week.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
During public comment, is that fine? So we could just move along here? So have just a few correspondence.
Can I ask you, what's the board of assessment review? Somebody's dropping off or?
Yeah, Mike is gone.
Somebody's dropping off?
Oh, Mike. Oh, oh, no, 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 that's, yeah, somebody, who is it? Yeah, somebody.
So they don't want to be on it anymore, or they?
Well, the policy is we aren't.
We have, so if that person couldn't.
I don't know if it's.
Joel or somebody.
So we have a request from the Boy Scouts of America, and it's PAC seventy-three, September fourteenth to fifteenth. They want to waive the three hundred dollars, I have no problem with that. And this is from Tara Noto, Joy Noto, and I think Colleen says it's, so I need a motion to waive for PAC seventy-three for the Full Chance Memorial Park.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
So move. All in favor?
All right.
So move. I have here from, for correspondence, dear Chief Kokosa, Town of Marlboro, please accept this formal letter of resignation affected July thirty-first, twenty nineteen. I appreciate the opportunities to have served this community as a police officer. Regards, Kyle Crusher? Regards, Kyle Crusher? And I think in the resolutions, we got a bunch of people that are gonna get back. Thank you, Ed. Item twelve, correspondence, James, you have something to say about the brush or? Would you like to come up? Would you like to come up? Have to try to fight the crowd off, James.
Well, first thing, I think if you're gonna change the brush permit, you should do that at the beginning of the year for twenty twenty, when the new permits are sold. Otherwise, you're going to have people who have permits now, who think it's one way, and then suddenly you've changed it when they've already paid. So I don't think you should make any of those changes until you sell the twenty twenty permits. The second thing I'd like to say, I think it would be much less confusing if it were per day, because the people who are at the location are gonna change. You know, you have two different people, you know, they rotate, they would have to leave information to the other person. Oh, this person came in, this way whoever's there sees the person, just has to know, okay, that person can't come back. I think that's a much easier way to do it than to have them come in once a week. There is a separate charge if somebody brings a pickup truck load in, which is two punches. So a commercial person bringing in a large vehicle with a large amount is gonna get charged a lot of punches.
I, I, truthfully, I don't know. I don't think anybody would.
Yeah, a pickup truck is, is two punches. Yeah, a pickup truck is, is two punches. What I don't think is really fair is also, you have a separate cost for a bag of leaves, which is five dollars. And I don't think, I think that's a little bit too much. A burn permit only costs five dollars. I don't know, how long is a burn permit good for? A month, okay? So I. So, you know. So, you know, I, I think it's, it's much better for the environment if people come and bring these things to the transfer station, they get ground up and they get used and they put back into the, uh, into the cycle. Now, I could see at the transfer station, maybe when you talk to the people who come to grind it up, maybe there could be some further separation, maybe leaves and grass in one area, other stuff.
Yeah, they don't like leaves for some reason.
Yeah, because, yeah, so maybe putting those separate might be a better idea, um, just to make it easier for them. But in any case, I think you'd be better off with one visit per day and also to make that change when you sell the twenty twenty permits, because otherwise it's too confusing and people have already paid for these permits.
Colleen, how many people do we have at Houston Landville?
Um, it's hard to say, I mean.
About a hundred?
I'd say at least, we've given out probably at least a hundred and twenty permits.
We have two guys up there, I think the two guys can handle a hundred and twenty people.
Not everybody has this brush permit.
And not everyone has a brush permit, so you probably have maybe thirty percent.
Maybe less than a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, we'll try it, see how it works.
But I, but I don't think you should do it till twenty twenty, because people have already paid for these permits. People have already paid for these permits.
I could actually go through our system and find out who has this brush permit we have.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. Any other, uh, public hearing?
Is that clear enough for you, Colleen, to go forward?
I have a couple of questions. Al, you talked about in your report that you had met with Robert Pollak about the Main Street. Can you give us a little bit more detail about what, discusses it kind of move forward?
Yes, he's hoping to move forward, he actually, we were talking about, uh, Robert has, uh, a density problem, he has, uh.
Three parcels, right, Tom?
Yep. And, uh. And first of all, probably, he has the option of leaving the three, but, and then it would be five thousand square foot for each parcel, but he's looking for more than fifteen thousand square feet. He's looking for something like, uh, thirty something or up there, maybe, uh, thirty-six or something. He wants, he wants to put the retail and a bunch of studio apartments and one bedroom apartments. But it's not concrete, it's not, uh.
Does he need zoning board waiver?
Uh, no, I think what occurred at the last meeting was that his engineer gave us three different suggestions. And one of the suggestions was to acquire more land. And I think that's the one he's following, so this way he could put the amount of apartments he wants and the amount of retail he wants. So that's where we left it off.
Is there more land on that strip?
He has to acquire some land, and he's already acquired, and it seems like it could be dual. So at that meeting, it was that he was going to research and see how, you know, to acquire that, uh, small piece of parcel to make the density that he needs to put in for the retail or for the apartments.
Is that on the corner or on the other side of the red brick building?
It's all on that corner, it's all on the west side of the Main Street, right, across from the Vivian and the hairdresser.
The other thing I wanted to ask you about was, is there any status on the railroad crossing decision?
No, I just called up a couple of people and they have no idea, so.
Are we past the dead, their deadline now?
Their deadline's way back, two months ago. It's like it's supposed to be sixty days to get a determination, and they, we haven't heard anything, so.
Were you given any reason as to the delay?
No, no reason, I've called DOT, I've called, uh, our representative Cuomo, he's looking into it. It was supposed to happen in July, it never happened in July, any response, so we keep on pulling one. They have to, you know, I mean, we had that whole hearing, so, I mean, we were there.
And the lady.
It seemed like it should have been a no brainer, it seemed like everybody agreed on moving it to the south and, uh, you know, having a pedestrian crossing, uh.
Okay, thanks.
Very frustrating, I, I don't know what it is. It's probably CSX or whatever, lobbyist they have up there, or. Anyhow.
Now BJ is here.
Yeah, BJ, you want to come up and do a report on the, uh, Meet Me in Marlborough? We were actually waiting for you, we were stalled.
A little late.
It's okay.
I keep eating everything. Well, a lot of things have happened the past month, and, uh.
A lot of things have happened the past month, and, uh.
I apologize for not being part of the meeting down at the train station. But I had bought, we had bought tickets for Contra in Connecticut half a year ago, so. Could pass that up. Anyhow, so. About the train station, about the waterfront. Actually brought a little handout here. There you go. I should give you a, uh, I could give you a, uh, what we can expect of ships coming up this way. They already hear some of them, they talked about, uh, more tonnets coming through here over the next few years. And, uh, we have a local company in, in Kingston, New York that I'm sure most of us are familiar with already, the Hudson River Cruises, very appropriate name. And, uh, they have just one ship, and they come down this way every now and then, but at least they are in operation. Would they be looking at Milton? Who knows, but they, at least they should know about us. It's more or less self-explanatory, of course, but, uh, the, the other one is a very big company located out in, uh, Getford, Connecticut, that's cruising all over this country already. And they have several cruisers coming up and down, the Hudson, they would certainly be interested. I spoke to operations and, uh, new business development folks at the American Cruise Lines. And, uh, they can't tell us right now, but they are very interested in coming out here to look at the, at the port, so to speak. Because without seeing it, I mean, I sent them the attachments that you sent, so to speak. And, uh, so they looked at all that, but they like to come out here, not just to look at the facility, to be, but the town, what we have to offer here, especially down the road. So that was, uh, I thought that was a very good, um, development, that they are showing an interest. And so is the, um, Nancy is her name, I've known her for many, many years, that Nancy Blount, the third cruise line here, located out in, uh, in Warren. They have cruised up and down this river for years, actually, from Rhode Island to New York, all the way up through here, through the Oswego Canal into Lake Ontario, and on and up the Lawrence to Montreal and Quebec City, where they turn around and then end up in Montreal. We're trying to attract more international passengers for that. I'm saying we, because I've worked a little bit with her over the years. And so, as much as this is, of course, not attracting to, to Americans, it's an attraction to the world, no question about it. There also seem to be more developments in the area for more, uh, B and Bs, and, uh, and of course, we know about the distilleries and, and of course, we know about the orchards and. Good on the line, lots of things are happening. And it's not happening overnight, obviously, but at least we are in better shape today than we were, let's say, ten years ago. Sort of hopeless situation in many ways, so. There's a lot of, uh, meetings, we have board meetings and tourism meetings and so on. And we actually have people starting to come to the meetings, which is also very exciting. That was very difficult over the past many years to actually show interest. I have more of these handouts, if, uh.
Thank you.
This, this.
Yes, I will, thank you.
Have yet another handout. This is what's happening on Wednesday. Where Meet Me Marlborough has hired this gentleman, who is a, um, his name is Tim Morales. He's a local gentleman who is a specialist in marketing small organizations, teaches us what to do and not to do, and tries to also, which I think is, in a sense, more important than anything, to get the members, especially the landowners, the growers, the farmers, and anybody else that makes a living from the, the land, for them to understand the synergies that could be built up. And it's actually interesting to see, when we started in oh-three, oh-four, something like that, so many people didn't want to come to the meetings because, oh, no, I can't, he's meeting with another farmer, because he's my competitor. Now it's changing, it's a very, very positive thing, I can, I'm not making this up, this is really, really nice to see people, not only farmers, but other people in business in the area showing a great interest. The more we can get the word out, obviously, the more people are gonna show an interest, especially if you start to make some progress. I don't know what happened at the last meeting regarding the waterfront, but any, any new developments that we should know about?
We had, the board voted to go ahead with the bond, that's what you asked.
Good.
Do you have your, can you hear today?
I do.
Okay.
I can actually hear today.
So it was, it was unanimous vote to go ahead with the bond? So it was unanimous vote to go ahead with the bond? It was a unanimous vote among the town board to go for a bond?
Well, the, how are we doing with the money? Do we do the fundraisers, or is there anything like that we can think of doing?
Well, there is a fundraiser that Alan mentioned.
So, uh, yeah, we, we, as I said, I, I, I'm here to, to really to report that things are moving forward.
BJ, this is great, thank you. BJ, this is great, thank you.
We'll, uh, move on to, uh, the resolutions. Uh, Resolution sixty-three to appoint a part-time police officer. Supervisory Lanza proposes the following, whereas the police committee has interviewed for the position of part-time police officer, and whereas is recommend, the recommendation of the police committee, as well as the chief of police, is to appoint, uh, Michelle Hager as part-time police officer. Now therefore be resolved, Michelle Hager be appointed immediately upon completion of a background check and move towards adoption. Yes.
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 Councilman Koenig. Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, okay. Thank you. Uh, Resolution sixty-four to appoint a part-time police officer. Supervisory Lanza proposes the following, whereas the police committee has interviewed for the position of part-time police officer, and whereas is recommendation, it is the recommendation of the police committee, as well as the chief of police, to appoint Thomas Keat as part-time police officer. Now be, now therefore be resolved that Thomas Keat be appointed immediately upon completion of a background check and moves towards adoption. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, Resolution sixty-five to appoint a full-time police officer. Supervisory Lanza proposes the following, whereas the police committee has interviewed for the position of a full-time officer, police officer, and whereas it is the recommendation of the police committee, as well as the chief of police, to appoint Hale DeJardins, DeJardins, uh, as full-time police officer. Now therefore be resolved that Hale DeJardins be appointed immediately contingent upon the successful completion of a medical exam and moves towards adoption.
Yeah, I interviewed him three years ago for a part-time, well, a few part-timers hung in there, he likes the department, he likes the town. He actually moved from, he was Cornwall and moved up here to Elgin, Marlborough now. So he'd be a really good agent to the police department. And I say yes. Councilman Baker. Yes. Councilman Koenig. Yes. Yes.
Thank you, board. Uh, this is a Resolution sixty-six, appoint a law firm to rep, present the interest of arbitration. So basically what this is, uh, there's a three panel for, uh, for arbitration, and there's the, the, the guy that determines, and then there's Mr. Scalfary, who owns, uh, that represents the PBA. And then, uh, there's our lawyer who represents us, excuse me. And so, that being said, so the three panels, uh, the three people on that panel, now somebody has to represent legal for the Town of Marlborough, and that's what this is about. David Weiss has recommended that this individual who he has been working with, he recommends that they be our attorney. So that's basically what it is, and, uh, so that's basically what it is, and, uh.
So what is, what's Dave's position, who does he represent?
He's on, he's one of the panels, the three people on the panel. Yeah, so he can't represent the town, yeah, so he can't represent the town. He's, he's on the panel. He's on the panel, so they, so balance it out, and then there's the guy in the middle. That's the guy in the middle. So this is the first time that we're going through arbitration, so. So, I could read the whole things, so. So everybody, so basically that's what it is. I had a conversation with Dave, uh, and he, he recommends this highly, this highly, he's a, he's, he's at a cost of a hundred and seventy-five per hour, which is reasonable, and, uh, so that's what this resolution is about. And if anybody wants to read the full resolution, they can go to the website. And the individual that's the actual arbitrator guy. Yeah, so he is, both sides, they all hear both sides, and then they, they make a determination. a determination. So I think the PBA also has a lawyer represented, and then we have a lawyer representing the town, and there's the three people on the, on the panel. I really don't know. I think maybe, maybe not. I haven't heard that we're included in that, but I'll, I'll definitely ask. And if it's an open public meeting, I don't know. An arbitration, like I said, this is the first time we're going through this, we really don't know the ins and outs, so, but I'll definitely find out, Al. Is there anything else? You good? Is there anything?
You're welcome.
And moves for its adoption. You're welcome.
Supervisor Lanzetta?
Yes.
Councilman Mallory?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Koenig?
Yes.
Councilman Koenig?
Thank you very much. And so we're, we're going to table the, uh, the zoning, the secret negative declaration we're gonna do when we get everything sorted out with the county, and legal, and Thomas is gonna look at it, and send it to him. Like I said, I got it as I was walking out the door. There was a couple advisory, but there was one recommendation, and as you know, a recommendation, if you don't follow it, you have to override it with a super majority, and I, I don't want to do that. I think there's a, they make some good suggestions, so let's look into it, and nobody's in a hurry for this right now. So, that being said, so, that being said, Al? So...
The second, the next resolution goes with that first, right?
Yeah.
Both of them or not?
Yeah.
So we have to say, both of them or not?
Yeah.
So with that being said, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much. Sorry about the TVs, folks. Sorry about the TVs, folks.
Everybody left, now, everybody left. TVs didn't work.
I, I'm having, uh, to have Tommy take pictures, I'm gonna show Mike what he's doing. I, um, had Tommy take pictures of both TVs, and I'm gonna take a picture of the computer so I can show Mike what's going on.
Yeah, Scott's suggestion was just to reboot the computer.
I tried. I tried two, three, four times. It has something to do with this quick setup, it has to.